So I'll convene the work session of Tuesday, September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty to order. This is a fully remote virtual meeting. So Kevin, given that case, why don't we actually take a roll?
Absolutely, Madam Chair. Commissioner Willie?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Here.
Commissioner Treese?
Here.
Commissioner Scoughton?
I'm here.
Chair Harrington?
Here. Thank you, colleagues, for all staying healthy. I appreciate everyone's efforts in this uncertain time. The first item on our agenda today is board and leadership communication. Who would like to go first?
I'll go first. I don't really have anything this week, so I'll just pass this time.
I can go. We had WCCC yesterday. Thank you, Chair, for sending out the slideshow that we got during the meeting. So you got it about the same time we did. Just a heads up for all of you what the mayor's concerns are in middle housing. Everything from Sherwood, who is saying that the parking standards really don't work for them. You can only have one spot per dwelling. That's the state standard, and that was verified. They're a mile from transit, and they're saying that just doesn't work. And to Jeff Delane from Cornelius, who said they've tried it and it doesn't work there either. And so fairly unanimous opinion on the mayor's part that there needs to be some work and some discussion. Tim Knapp has a bit to say, as well as Luke Callaway. So we'll be dealing with that issue sometime in the near future. But I don't think there's any easy answers. Obviously, if there was, it would have been dealt with. So that was yesterday. Thursday morning is J-PAC. I've really not read the entire packet yet. But I'll brief you after that. So that's it for me.
I might just add, I had the very unique, I was in a very unique position at the very end of the last long session to see the speaker take time off and temporarily stop the floor sessions so she could basically break some arms to get that bill passed, the middle housing bill. She spent a couple of hours working the Senate over and using her considerable influence and ability to make things happen or not happen for her members, and they got this passed. So I think she's pretty committed to that bill. That doesn't mean that there isn't room for compromise. But it's very interesting. There was an intensity about the way she perceived that that legislation passed only because of her, frankly.
I'll go. This is Pam. My week was pretty slow last week. I'm still recovering. I did go out to, my first time driving was out to Washington County Fairgrounds to tour the fairgrounds with the animals, seeing what the rescue efforts were there. So that was really impactful. I'm glad I had that opportunity. Just on personal note, my husband had his knee replaced yesterday. And so we are two adults with a total of six limbs right now. We're trying to, we're limping through here. His surgery was successful. It was a long day. But apparently, they did not seal the wound appropriately. So when we came home and put ice on it, things, his wound's exposed. He has to go back today to have it redone. So I'm not certain what my schedule is going to be. I apologize upfront. But you may see my camera go on and off, and if I do need to leave, I'll let you know, and I apologize.
I don't have anything today, Chair.
Well, good luck with that, Commissioner Treese. We certainly want to make sure that his wound from the surgery doesn't get infected and that all goes smoothly for the two of you. So thank you, Commissioner Willie. So last week for me, we had the second meeting of the Washington County Transit Committee. This is the one that is working on the prioritization of funding for last mile transportation, which affects our rural communities as well as a few of our different suburban cities as well. So we collected priority feedback from the committee members and discussed meaningful ways to go about public outreach. There will be a public comment period coming up in October. I will send you information on that. We also had the Washington County Audit Committee meeting. Fieldwork is going on for both the Washington County budget as well as the Clean Water Services budget. And so there was just a discussion about the process on that, and our next meeting will be in January. On Thursday, we had the quarterly service district managers' meeting. We had quite a bit of discussion about the value of the CARES Act CRF funding that you all supported through the framework that we adopted in early January, particularly the dollars that were available to help them offset their costs for the public health work that needed to be done as a result of this new coronavirus, the utility assistance money for members of our community, as well as the childcare. Since last Tuesday, when our CAO announced during our meetings that we had fires in Washington County, particularly the first one out by Gaston, Cherry Grove, and Hag Lake, there have been a number of meetings with Governor Brown to collect information from the different counties impacted by wildfires to make sure that the state is getting the best available information about needs. She's done a really good job in collecting that information and acting as swiftly as possible. The state application to FEMA for disaster relief moved very, very quickly. It was somewhat unprecedented, but many thanks go to our federal delegation for helping with that as well. Now to this week. Oh, back on the governor call. The state is providing N ninety-five masks for farm workers that are being distributed through the CBOs. We've seen the mention of the N ninety-five masks from the state in our latest situation report. Seven hundred National Guard troops have been deployed throughout the state to help. And with regard to the fires in Marion County, particularly in the Detroit Lake Adana area, there are currently one hundred and twenty-four boats floating on the lake. So the dam levels are being managed in order to recover those boats. And they have estimated, they have about ten thousand trees that have fallen along Highway twenty-two. And many of us, I know I travel that highway regularly to get over to Bend. So it's closed, and it will remain so for quite some time. Yesterday was AOC Day. It was originally convened to make sure that we were at a state of readiness for a potential special session in September that we now know is not happening. So there was just a bit of update preparing for a potential special session after Election Day, sometime in late November into December. And there were a few legislators that joined the meeting, different legislative steering committee meetings along the way to reinforce the strong possibility of that. Another thing that I learned through both the Public Safety Committee yesterday, Steering Committee through AOC Day, and another governor's call was that the Coffee Creek Correctional Facility in Wilsonville had been evacuated. The school district there also had helped provide buses. It took them ninety hours to evacuate all the folks involved there, and they moved them to the Deer Ridge Facility over in Madras. So everyone is getting their meals, their medications, obviously more crowded conditions than usual. And hopefully, it won't need to go on too much longer. So that's it from me. I want to make sure that all the commissioners know that we have a four P M. agenda item today. Please check your calendars on that. It's a virtual tour of the fairgrounds along with our federal and state delegation. Okay, and now over to, yes, Commissioner.
Yeah, what one of the items that, I don't think that's me. Somebody else see that. Chair, you might mention that you've been asked to sign a letter on the I two oh five tolling, which would say that we'd like to participate in that process. And so I didn't know if you were going to bring that up under your particular agenda, but the staff has written a very good letter for us to have, to consider. The chair has been asked to sign that and send that. So did you want to comment on that at all, or?
I thought I had signed a letter like two weeks ago on that, so.
I don't think so. In fact, I just got an email from Stephen Roberts saying, make certain Roy that you mentioned it.
Okay.
Yes, Madam Chair, this letter came from Stephen Roberts. It was to the board on Friday, asking you to discuss it today and approve it or modify it so they could send it off regarding the tolling of two oh five.
Okay. Commissioners, have all of the commissioners had a chance to look at it yet? Because if not, we can come back to it a little bit later on the agenda. That's all.
I believe I've seen it. It came as an attachment on Friday, I thought, did it?
Yes.
Okay, I've seen it. It's fine.
Basically asking us to participate and allows us to be involved in discussions, even though it's over in Clackamas County, we still think we have a role, and we'd like to at least have an oar in the water. So it's pretty generic other than that.
I know we'd had one a couple of weeks ago on a similar or very same thing. So yeah, I'm in support of signing on that, so. Any other commissioners? Okay, great. All right, now for leadership communication. Ms. Angie, our CAO.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. Good morning, commissioners. So I do have a couple of updates. Just for the board meeting, as a reminder, we have pulled the introduction to limited English assistance policy and procedure from the agenda item. Our communications and community engagement staff is busy responding to the wildfires. We will be bringing this item back after our CEIO starts. This provides Latricia Tillman an opportunity to review and comment on this agenda item, but it will be coming back before the board in the near future. Also, as part of today's regular business meeting, in addition to our weekly update from Marnie on COVID, John Wheeler, our emergency manager, will be also joining her, providing a wildfire update as well as an air quality update of what we are at this point expecting to see through the rest of the week. Third, thank you, Chair, for raising the virtual tour at four o'clock. This tour will be recorded and posted on social media so that it is also accessible to our community to view the fairgrounds. We have received a lot of public interest in not only touring the fairgrounds, also helping with volunteer time or donations. And so this is a way for us to show the fairgrounds at a time that, due to air quality, we want to limit access. And also, on a good note, animals are starting to join their families again and go home. So we are hopeful and anticipate, if we wait a week, we'll really be at limited operations at the fairgrounds. As a reminder, our CEIO, Chief Equity and Inclusion Officer, actually starts work tomorrow. So we'll see if that's in a virtual or in-person environment. And she will be at next week's board meeting for an introduction and to say a few things about herself. And I think that's all the updates that I have. Thank you.
I have a question. How many of our Washington County, well, so last week, midweek, all of Clackamas County was put on evacuation notices, level one going on up to level three. And we learned from you that some of our employees, also with CWS, were impacted. So I'm wondering, approximately of our two thousand employees, how many live in Clackamas County and were affected by those orders?
So Chair Harrington, I can follow up with that information, as well as employees who live in Washington County and that were impacted, because we have Washington County resident employees that were impacted as well. So I will get back to you on that.
Great. All righty, Alan.
My own air quality report was I had to use a machete to hack through the smoke to get in today. So it was pretty bad out there, but I'm just working with management staff to respond to this latest emergency.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Willie, did you have a question?
Yes, I wanted to ask Tanya if there were plans to have our new CEIO officer, I guess that's redundant, meet with the commissioners anytime in the next few weeks. Have we got that, we're going to get that scheduled, please?
I can certainly do that.
All right, thank you.
Well, welcome back, Alan. All right, over to Clean Water Services.
Thank you, Chair. This is Mark Jockers with Clean Water Services. I'm sitting in for Diane today, who's at the Virtual Water Reuse Symposium. She's moderating there. I just wanted to report that following the county as well, we declared an emergency due to the hazardous air conditions last week and implemented our inclement weather policy, which essentially puts us at minimum staffing, all onsite staffing necessary to meet our compliance obligations, as well as to respond to people. Primarily lab folks, treatment plant operators, and also a response team available as needed there. I did share Privy Council with you via email today, noting that the Tuollet River Keepers will be presenting their annual Green Heron Award to Bob Baumgartner of Clean Water Services at their virtual gala next, it's Saturday, the twenty-sixth of September, and encourage the board, if they're available, to join that. They are honoring Bob for his career-long dedication to water quality, not only here in the Tuollet Basin, but throughout the state of Oregon. So thank you very much.
So Mark, I have a similar question for Clean Water Services on employees who live in Clackamas County, as well as those who may have been impacted by the two Washington County fires. So if you can compile that information and share it with the board through an email, that would be great.
Chair, I can tell you, now that we did do some of that estimation last week, we have about, we have about four hundred employees, including temporaries. We believe that somewhere between ten and fifteen percent of our employees were impacted by some level of evacuation.
And another question I've been wondering about for Clean Water Services, during this whole COVID nineteen experience, your crews have been doing a marvelous job of maintaining the forty-three some odd pump stations, particularly with the challenges of wipes and rags that are flowing through the pipes and into the pump stations. I'm wondering, as we have folks staying home more due to the smoky air condition, as well as the tips and tricks about stuffing wet paper towels in any cracks and crevices from windows and sliding glass doors and whatnot, how is that going for the crew?
Well, I don't have an immediate response on what impact the fires may have in terms of more people staying at home. I will say that we're not seeing a real appreciable difference in terms of the decrease in the number of disposable wipes, certainly not deflushable wipes that are in the system. It continues to be a challenge for us. We're very pleased to see that there's some legislation that's currently under development for the twenty-one session that we've been working closely with Representative Halm on, on how we might be able to do better education and management of that issue for wastewater treatment collection systems across the state of Oregon.
Great, thank you. All right, so as we're done with leadership communication, we'll check in on any formal agenda item discussions or questions. Do commissioners have any questions on any items on today's formal agenda? No. We will, for the proclamation for Hispanic Heritage Month, we will have three outside speakers, and then a couple of Washington County employees will be reading the proclamation for us in English as well as Spanish. So just a heads up that that's coming. And it looks like in our email, and I was just trying to access it myself, we have just received an updated packet of letters for one of our ordinances that we have a public hearing on later today in our business meeting. Ordinance eight sixty-nine, we've gotten more letters on that. So just a heads up there, we'll each need to access that. Okay, we'll move on next to our first work session topic of the day, and that's the Sheriff's Office Independent Use of Force Review.
All right, gives a second, Madam Chair, as we're setting up the sheriff and his guests to present to you.
Yep.
Sheriff Garrett, are you there? Sheriff Garrett, can you hear us?
I can. Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Terrific. Good morning, Chair Harrington, commissioners. Pat Garrett here with the Sheriff's Office. I'm joined today by Chief Deputy Carlin Degman, who supports the Jail and Services Division to include our training function. And we're here to provide you an update about a project that we're excited about. I might advance to slide one. That project is, we invited and selected a national use of force expert to conduct an independent review of our policy, training, and internal review process with respect to use of force. So in addition to what you see on this slide, we invited this expert to do this project because we recognize the heightened concerns and interest by many in our community with respect to law enforcement, use of force, because of interest from national events and also local events to include our own agency. We invited this independent review because we're focused on strengthening community engagement and trust, and because we're a learning organization. It's why we work hard to measure up to high standards of other programs like national accreditation and Oregon jail standards inspections, and because this project includes community participation that supports relationship building and trust. And I'll ask Chief Deputy Degman to dive into some of those details and encourage questions along the way.
Good morning, Chair Harrington and Commission. Thank you for having us. I'm going to cover the selection process, the vendor that we chose, and a brief timeline of events. If you could advance to the next slide. We put together a committee of eight. We used uniformed staff members from both jail and patrol, some non-uniformed staff members from the Sheriff's Office, two community members, and one representative of the CAO's office as our committee. The committee received vendor packets and a criteria for scoring. And we asked the committee to score, giving their own perspectives, and write notes of their concerns and questions. Each person's scoring did so independently. The committee members did not know who else was on the committee, so there was no opportunity for anybody to sway answers. As a criteria, we identified five points that we felt were important. One, we wanted an expert analysis that would show strengths and weaknesses of the program that we have, specifically areas that we could grow in. The team of the vendors, we wanted to make sure they were well-rounded. We were looking for a team that understood the legal parameters surrounding use of force. But we also wanted to make sure they understood public relations, concerns about police reform and ideas, and a vendor that could foster a relationship of safety and trust. We wanted a vendor that would take a collaborative approach, specifically with our community, our internal and external stakeholders. We wanted a vendor that would have, that would show defined steps and process and a timeline, someone that had done this type of work before and had a process already outlined. And most important, we wanted a vendor that would give the final report publicly. We did not want this done in a vacuum and presented only to the Sheriff's Office. We wanted community engagement, accountability, and a solid plan for implementation. Next slide, please. Holis Solutions is the vendor that we ultimately chose. They won the scoring by a wide margin. And here's what we believe makes them ideal. They have experience collaborating and getting input from agencies and communities, and they invest a lot of time doing their research. They have verified extensive experience of their team members, and their resumes were quite impressive. They've demonstrated engagement with community to improve public trust and safety. They've worked with Chicago, New York, the DOJ, and Charleston, to name a few. They have a robust knowledge of legal parameters, as well as the social expectations for reform. And their final report will be shared in a workshop with our community leaders and stakeholders. Next slide, please. Here is a brief timeline of what to expect. Our stakeholder and community interviews should start in October. They will be setting up an email where the public can mail their questions and concerns and give input directly to Solus without our interference. They have already started collecting documents and doing their data review. That would include everything from our policies and procedures to actual reports out of our use of force database. They will be doing site visits in late November, in-person interviews, and watching how we do what we do on a daily basis. They will share their interim findings when they have an initial report to ensure there are not any other questions that still need to be answered. And their final report should be done. need to be answered. And their final report should be done by the end of March 2021, barring any other issues. The implementation, planning, and onsite workshop will be held thereafter with community leaders and stakeholders. And that was one thing that was really important to us. They couldn't just give us advice on things that we needed to grow in, but they had to be able to show us a plan and do some of the training so that we could make significant changes or go in the direction that our community is asking us to go in.
And I would just close by, thank you, Chief Deputy Degman, the opportunity to learn on a, on a topic that's of such importance, we're legitimately excited. We're excited to share what we have because we know we have strengths. And we also recognize as, as an agency committed to continuous quality improvement, that I'm sure we have areas where we can improve. And so we're, we're just excited to, to do this deep dive, to learn where we can learn and improve going forward. And we look forward to getting started, and we're committed to doing the work. And we're going to learn as we go and expect that Holis, the vendor, will be coming to share in an in-process review format, to share with you probably late this calendar year or early 2021. But we're happy to answer any questions.
So Commissioners, as we are fully in Zoom, I will call on each of you to see if you have any questions or comments. And I'll do that by, well, not, not in any ordered set per se. Commissioner Willie, do you have any comments or questions?
I don't have any questions right now.
Commissioner Scoughton?
I'm very pleased that the sheriff has taken this initiative. It's, it's great. Very much appreciate his work and efforts and look forward to just finding out what they find out. Thank you.
Commissioner Rogers?
Not at this point. Pat, just one quick thing. How will this inform how you develop your policing practices in the future?
Well, our policy, training, and internal assessment process regarding use of force, I mean, that's, you know, that's a big deal with policing. And I think it, where I hope we have the most opportunity to grow is in, in training and accountability. And as you know, we have a marvelous training center where we can build scenario-based training that highlights and, and trains de-escalation and, and force. When we have to use force, sometimes we have to use force. We just want to make sure that we tie that into and prioritize de-escalation along the way. So I just think conditioning our folks to face the challenging circumstances they find in the field is one of the biggest opportunities that we have with this project that will help influence us going forward.
Thank you.
Commissioner Trese?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you both for your presentation. I have a, I have a question about the, when you started this process, I think it's important for all of us to recognize that, as you mentioned, you're a learning organization, but this, this process, I believe, was started quite a while ago. Is that correct, Sheriff?
Well, it was. And we, we came, we came to, to conclude shortly after George Floyd was killed. And, and, you know, other events, as I alluded to earlier, local and regional and national, that, that now was the time to really lean into this conversation about use of force, lean into reform discussions, understand that we, we are a learning organization, and this is a front burner topic for our community and for our profession. So it's been, it's been building for a few months, but that's how, it's taken us a few months to really get proposals that were well-informed, have an objective way to score those proposals, and then work with our, our vendor to ensure that we have a plan that's going to meet our needs and our community's needs.
All right, I'll go last. Thank you, Sheriff Garrett and Deputy Chief Degman. I really appreciate your approach on this and sharing it with us. I do have a few questions to confirm my understanding. On your first slide, why is the Washington County Sheriff's Office seeking review? You talked about to ensure the policies, training, evaluation, and accountability aligns with best practices. So I just want to confirm that this will be looking at things both for law enforcement as well as for the jail operations, right?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
And will you actually be looking at the reports of, well, the vendor, will they actually be looking at reports of use of force over some set time period versus just the policies and the training so that there is evaluation of actual field experiences in law enforcement as well as in the jail?
Thank you. That is a great question. Yes, they will be pulling reports all the way back to 2015, and we will be granting them access to everything that we have, our written documentation as well as any videos. They can also go back and do interviews with anyone that was involved.
Wow, thank you. How many vendors did your, did the committee have to go through and consider and evaluate?
We contacted five vendors. There's not a whole lot of vendors that do this type of work with this type of expertise. So one of the vendors was recommended by the community, and then we started reaching out and asking what other vendors were available, and then asked them to bid.
How many bids did you get?
Five.
Oh, you did. Good. That's great. I'm also wondering, so I don't know all of the vernacular for sure, but as, as you move forward with this review of force, will that also, in these reports that the vendor will have an opportunity to review, will it also be looking at instances where charges of obstructing an officer were involved?
Absolutely. They will be looking for any kind of trends that they can identify and any areas that we can approve. I was on the phone for about an hour with the president of this company yesterday, and he absolutely assured me that they will not be pulling their punches in any manner when they review our data. They will be very frank, and they will give us really good insight. They use a lot of science and research, and they have a lot of very educated people with social dynamics and human interaction, and they specialize in de-escalation and how to talk to people and how to deal with people in crisis. So we're really looking forward to their point of view.
Thank you for helping me better understand the, the nature of this review. I think not only can we on the commission have a high degree of confidence and comfort in, in how this review will be doing, going about the evaluation, but also members of our community as well. So thank you for really bringing that to life for me. The last question I have is, your presentation talked about the final report being shared publicly. And you, right, there are many months to go yet, just about six months or so. I'm wondering, what are your thoughts today? And they can certainly evolve over the, the next several months, but what are you thinking now about how that report will be shared publicly beyond the, the publication in March and the, the item, or step seven on the project summary?
Sure, let me read from their proposal how they do an actual presentation. So what they tried to do is they will present the final report in a workshop. And I, and I talked to Jonathan yesterday, again, he's the president, Jonathan Wender, he's the president. He says he will bring the group together and he will try to assess where trust is. He will get it, he, he will by then already have an idea of some of the issues that the public has identified, but he will also be talking to them in person. What are your current areas of concern? And then he will try to address some of those areas. And then he will find where we have common ground with our community so that we can come to mutual points that we can all work on collaboratively. But it's done in a workshop style. It's not just in a podium where they read the results and then it's shut down, or they take a few questions and have a way of answering to meet their needs. But they will actually have a workshop with community leaders, and some of the people that were involved in this will be invited to the table to help develop the strategic implementation plan.
Well, I can appreciate that there is a workshop as well as general public availability of the report. What I'm a little curious about, and there are six months to go yet, so we can talk about this further, is we know from just our recent May election results that our large community of over 610,000 people are really very satisfied with our public safety system. And that includes all aspects of public safety. So not just the sheriff, law enforcement, and the jail operations, but, you know, community corrections, juvenile justice, and so forth. So I want to make sure that as you proceed, that you do continue to engage with, I'll call it centralized aspects of our community who have expressed concern, who the Sheriff's Office has been engaged with, particularly members of our Latino community. But there's also an opportunity for the very supportive members of our community to have the benefit of learning more as well. So that, that's all, that's what I'm curious about. So I'm sure as, as schedules become clearer for the first four or five months of 2021, that, that will be clear to me.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, thank you, Sheriff Pat Garrett here. You make an excellent point, and this is, this is really about deepening engagement, which, which is, is already strong on many levels, but, but we have room to improve on levels as well, and deepening trust, which we have, I would characterize in the same manner, significant in a lot of areas, but room to grow in other areas. So we will continue to, to engage in a really meaningful and deep way going forward. This is just part of that, a part of that effort.
Thank you, Sheriff Garrett and Chief Deputy Degman. Really appreciate it. Is there anything else you want to say in, in closing on this topic?
No, just thank you for carving out the time to, to allow us to share this exciting project, and we'll be in touch.
Great. And as our, our workload and calendar is populated for 2021, we'll be sure to include this as part of that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to the next agenda item. Whoa, look at that. It's quarter, about 9:16, and our next agenda item is to convene into our 10 o'clock meeting. And given that we do have a new packet of public comment for our 10 o'clock meeting on ordinance 869, I think we can make good use of our time. Mr. Moss?
No, that is correct, Madam Chair. So we will kind of reconvene at 10, and I will open up the Zoom link about 9:40, 9:45 for you to get on and engage for the public.
Great. Board members, you okay with that? All set?
Yep.
Alrighty, we'll see you back here on a, a different Zoom link at 10 o'clock then.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.